Good evening. It's 7:00 PM, January 9th, here in Historic Town Hall. Before we convene the meeting, I'd just like to remind everyone that these proceedings are recorded by SCTV and broadcasted from there as well. Thank you very much, and we stand for a Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I ask you to remain standing for a moment, as we would like to give a moment of silence in memory of President Carter, and also Chief Wordy of the Sandwich Police Department. They'll be missed. Thank you. Is anyone here for public comment? Review and approval of minutes. May I suggest that we do them separately?
Make a motion where you approve the minutes of 12:05, 24.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero.
Make a motion where you approve of minutes of 12:19, 24.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Ellis.
Second. Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Three zero one, right? Okay. Town manager report.
In terms of upcoming meetings, I know we're going to talk about it later, but the special town meeting is next Monday, January 13th. That's Sandwich Middle High School at 7:00 o'clock. And then we also have a regular meeting next Thursday night, the 16th here, at 7:00. The next Finance Committee meeting will be Tuesday, February 4th, at 6:00 o'clock here, related to the budget presentation, which we'll do the week before. Couple of other, just really quick items to bring up. Eversource let us know that they're doing their annual vegetation work along the high tension lines. So if people see Eversource out there, that's their work on trimming back some of the trees from the overhead wires. People may not realize that the wall behind us here at Shaw Pond is actually a dam on Lower Shaw Pond. And then, as the board knows, we have a much more extensive dam on Upper Shaw Pond, and it's a five-year requirement with the State Office of Dam Safety to get those inspected. So we just completed our five-year inspection on both those places, and they all got good marks. And they always offer us good constructive criticism on how to trim some things back and a few other things that we'll be working on over the next year to address those. So if anyone's interested, I have, you know, bigger copies of the reports back at the office. And then I know every time we do the tax classification workshop, we always try to explain that when people get their bills for the third and fourth quarter, the entire increase for that fiscal year is seen in those last two quarters. So it's not those quarterly bills times four that represents the payment for the year, and there always seems to be questions. So we did send out some information recently over social media. And then we did highlight a link that already exists on the Assessing Department homepage. So if anyone wants to go on the town's homepage, there's a right prominently displayed. There's a link for some of those frequently asked questions. So it's a good resource if anyone has any questions, and that was it.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Correspondence, statements, announcements? I just have a few, if you don't mind. School committee meeting last night. Chronic absentee rates have improved. Please recall, a state ballot question eliminated. Passing the Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment System (MCAS) test results as a basis for high school graduation. Therefore, a competency determination is being developed by the school system. And the FY '26 school operating budgets were made public, and they'll be in before us and FinCom in the near future. And that's all I have. Thank you. Okay. Moving right along then, if I may, to... Public hearing. The Sandwich Select Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, January 9th, at 7:05 PM in Historic Town Hall Auditorium at 130 Main Street, Sandwich, Mass. 02563, upon the petition of Verizon New England Inc. and N-Star Electric Company, doing business as Eversource Energy, to request permission to install one joint-owned pole, 112/3.5, on the right-of-way on the south side of Beale Avenue, approximately 60 feet east of pole 112/3, and approximately 73 feet west of pole 112/4. Plan number 1A7H9QF. Motion to open the public hearing.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter. A roll call, please, for open?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, four zero. Please?
Did you just make sure the green light's on on the... Just so everybody can hear you.
If I want to sit? Good afternoon and Happy New Year to all. I work for Network Building and Consulting, who is a third-party contractor hired by Verizon to represent the permitting process of the pole placements at 33 Water Street. The purpose of the new pole install is to add power to 33 Water Street. So the pole replacement will only hold three transformers, so they need an additional transformer on that second pole.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public have any comments or questions? Okay.
And this is for the new project at the Wing School.
Yes.
The power source that will power the Wing School project.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Okay.
Make a motion where you approve the new pole on Beale Ave. as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero.
Thank you.
You have it. All good.
Have a good night.
You too as well. Thank you. Old business. Special town meeting, Monday, January 13th, 2025, at the Sandwich Middle High School, at 7:00 PM.
Yeah, so just, maybe just for the public's sake, the warrant is the exact same as what we had planned to present in... I think it was going to be on November 18th at the special town meeting. And then that was dissolved in recognition of Chief Miller's passing. And it's been rescheduled to next Monday night, January 13th. So I thought I'd just run quickly through the eight articles. And I wanted to stress that the one common theme of all eight articles is no money's coming from taxes. Everything that's on this is related to existing funds that are either being appropriated, or in one case, a first step in a two-step process to help address our biggest environmental issue moving forward. So the first article, because we did get additional Chapter 70 funding for the school department from the state, we need to appropriate that. So it's right around $164,000. Again, that's funded from state aid, so it doesn't come from taxes. Article two is to rescind the prior bond authorization that we had to sell the Wing School. We were able to pay those costs outright, and we didn't need to bond, which is a positive sign with the interest rates being higher. So our financial advisors like us, if you have authorization to bond but don't use it, they want you to rescind that authorization. So that's what Article two does. Article three appropriates some additional money into the Sandwich Promotions Fund based on the formula that the state approved. The amount that was approved in May wasn't the total appropriation that should have happened. So the extra roughly $65,000, which comes from existing room tax funds, would be divided up between the three organizations as printed in the warrant. Article four is an additional appropriation of just under $190,000 for some historic cemetery work at both Cedarville Cemetery, which is the cemetery across from the convenience store in East Sandwich on Route 6A, and then the Old Town Cemetery, which is behind the building that we're in now. Those are coming from existing CPA funds, and again, comes from money that we have on hand. Article five is to establish a revolving fund for the future for our short-term rental inspections. The state is imposing for all cities and towns in, starting in 2025, a requirement that officially-registered short-term rental dwellings and units need to get inspected by each town. So our plan is to adopt some bylaws that will be presented to town meeting in May, and also a fee schedule that the Select Board will adopt around the same time. And in the future, the cost for the licensing and for the inspection will be put in a special revolving fund to pay for the inspection costs to hire someone to go do those inspections. The way it works is we have to upfront the cost for the first year. So you'll see when we talk about the FY '26 budget, there'll be an appropriation of about $45,000 for that service. But we won't have to make that in the future, because the revenues that we'll be bringing in will pay for that. So this just allows us to establish that revolving fund in anticipation of starting it in July 1st. Article six was referenced earlier, and that deals with the Water Infrastructure Investment Fund surcharge. This is the first in a two-step process to increase the surcharge by 1% from 2% to 3%. This is, of all the articles, we'll do the biggest presentation on this. Just hitting on a couple of highlights, the main reason that we want to do this. I think everyone's aware of the wastewater issues that are impacting all of Cape Cod, including Sandwich. And the cost to implement some of these required improvements has gone up by a significant percentage since the COVID-19 public health emergency. And in short, by adding that extra 1% and bringing that money in slowly over time, it will significantly decrease taxpayers' bills in the sense that when we have to issue debt, we'll be able to get more done without issuing debt. But ultimately, when we eventually have to issue significant debt to implement the wastewater requirements, you know, the cost for that with interest and everything else will be a lot higher. So it's good to avoid that and push that off as long as we can to try to get the work that we need to done in the short term. And in our presentation, we'll highlight a bunch of the work that we've been doing for the last several years, especially the work recently on the three school treatment plants that we've been working with DEP on, and also with our neighbors to try to address the embayments that we contribute to in other towns, plus our ongoing efforts with Joint Base Cape Cod. It's also important to realize, although the implementation costs in every town are significant, Sandwich is very fortunate in that roughly only 25% to 30% of our residences will need to connect to the sewer line in phases one through three, which should cover the next 50 years. In many other towns, 100% of their properties need to be connected. And we also have no impaired embayments within our town boundaries. We contribute to three to the south. Just for comparison purposes, Falmouth has 14 such embayments, and we have none. So we're quite fortunate compared to almost all the other towns on Cape in terms of the severity of what we're going to have to address. But despite that being said, it's still very, very significant. It's the biggest capital and environmental issue impacting the Cape for the next 50-plus years. And, you know, several towns have been dealing with this for decades earlier than us. And if anyone needs more, you know, we're going to present more at town meeting. Article seven is to just appropriate much of the balance that exists in the WIF today, so we can start using it for our different work at the schools and any other implementation efforts that we have. It's fair to say that our two biggest efforts we've been focusing on are the three schools is one. And then second is trying to conceptually design the conveyance system, especially in the downtown area. We're still working really hard with our neighbors in Joint Base Cape Cod to try to come up with a solution there. But if we don't come up with one there, we're going to have to address it on our own. So this funding just helps us keep moving the ball forward and doing the work that we've been doing. And then lastly, Article eight... So Article seven comes from existing funds. It's not new funds. And then Article eight is to adopt two parts of the general laws related to sewer betterments and their assessments. It would give homeowners more flexibility when sewer connections are actually needed. So it helps the homeowner have different options once they are connected to a sewer line. And again, that should impact roughly 25% to 30% of all of our homes over all three phases. Phase one is much less than that. So, you know, we'll have slides. Dave Mason, our wastewater expert, will be there to answer questions. So those are the eight articles. Most of them are pretty straightforward. And again, none of them involve spending tax money. It's all existing funds that we have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Dunham?
And I should have said, on the WIF, it's a two-step process. So if it gets approved at the special, there would have to be a ballot question that the voters would approve in May for it to go into effect on July 1st. And the cost for that 1% is roughly $72 for the average-valued home annually.
All good? Okay. Fiscal 2026 budget overview. Current status, line items, waiting guidance. FY '25 and beyond implementation. Likely budget submission, presentation format? Whatever you have.
Yeah, so I just thought I'd give you an early dump on the budget.
Okay.
And if there's anything that you guys feel strongly about, let me know, because we can amend our presentation or tailor it that way. So we're scheduled to give our budget presentation the last Thursday in January. I believe it's the 30th. Just the time that it takes to put everything together, the printing of the binders, everything else. It's fair to say we're probably 95% of the way there. So I know with, you know, pretty decent certainty what some of the numbers are looking like. So I thought I'd share those with you and explain what's included in them. Probably the first thing I'd mention, and there's a lot of big accounts that we haven't had any feedback on yet. So all of the state aid and assessments, usually we'll get our... We'll hear the first thing literally the same week as our budget presentation. We'll start hearing a little bit about what the governor's office plans to submit. But as the board knows, the full state budget process usually isn't done until August. And so we'll be voting in May based on speculation on what we've heard up to that point. And as you know, we're always trying to be safe with our revenue estimates in terms of underestimating those and then overestimating our costs, so we have a balanced budget. We've heard rumors that the state's doing okay revenue-wise, so we don't anticipate there'll be any significant cuts. I think one of the items that has impacted us the most, certainly over the last 17, 18 years, is our tuition assessment line item. Thankfully, the last five years, the percentage increase has dropped significantly. So really, we won't have a decent feel on that until probably March. So there are several line items that we're waiting guidance on. In putting together the budget, there's a chart in your packet that shows you what we were able to implement on that FY '25 and beyond plan in the fiscal year we're in now. And then the second page, at the top, there's like five or six things that we want to implement for '26. So it won't be a surprise when I go through what some of the changes are. But all those things on there, except one, we're implementing with the base budget. And then the public works infrastructure, which I want to talk about separately, that would be in a second option budget, depending on what some of those numbers come back like once we hear from the state and others. So the likely budget submission that we'll present is a base budget that's under 4% that would include, you know, basically level-serviced operations plus a few things that are listed on the FY '25 and beyond. There's some money set aside to help address the public facilities maintenance, which I know, if you remember, Brian Schlegel came before the Finance Committee in June. I think the board was there as well to talk about that need. We're coming up with roughly $50,000 for the library as positions turn over to do an assistant library director position at some point, hopefully during FY '26. Some additional money that I put in for tree warden expenses, because that program has really taken off, and they've been doing a lot of work. There's extra money that police, fire, and DPW have mentioned for their regular operating budget. So it's not new expenses. It's expenses that they already have where the numbers have gone up. Probably the best example I can give you and the biggest jump is in DPW. They have a lease purchase of equipment line item that traditionally we funded at $150,000 a year. So some of the large work trucks that you see, especially during plow season and that you see in the summer out and about, those used to go for about $150,000 to $175,000. They're up to $375,000 now. So we're increasing that line item by $200,000. Police had identified roughly $107,000 worth of needs that they had in their budget just to keep things the same, and fire was just under 100. So I hate to say it, but the big three keep getting bigger, and the small 20 keep getting a smaller piece of the pie, but we're getting by. And we're also looking at trying to see if we could implement a part-time position to help with grant writing and communications. That's a goal. And I think I touched on the bigger line items. This will all be in the budget presentation in a lot more detail to help offset some of those expenses to stay significantly below 4%. We've identified some additional funding sources, and I'll highlight these in my presentation. In Good Health has committed to give us $200,000 annually towards our school resource officer positions. And if you remember, last year, both the Select Board and the Finance Committee didn't want to count on those funds unless they were actually in our account. And so I think by the time I make the budget presentation at the end of the month, we'll have that money. And then it'll be incumbent on us and the board to adopt a new host community agreement, because our current one is invalid according to the Cannabis Control Commission. So when we redo that document, I'll make sure to include a thing on the donation agreement in there, which they've been supportive of. So that's something we want to try to get done by March 1st, ideally. In addition, our ambulance fund receipts have been quite positive, so we're able to transfer another $100,000 from there. And then there've been some other small-income things that we should bring in, about another $25,000. The Weston Fund has done really well with their investments, and they told us that they would be contributing more and just looking at ways to offset some of those services. So again, the base budget would probably be right around like 3.75%. If you add in the $560,000 for the DPW public infrastructure, and I'll explain that in a second, it would go to just over 6.1% based on our current calculations. The $560,000 would get us to a total combined amount of the 2.4 or 2.6 million that was recommended in the last pavement management report that was issued in early 2022. So we get almost $800,000 from Chapter 90. In that so-called fair share formula, this past year, we got just over $400,000. That fluctuates a little bit. If you remember, we bumped the DPW budget two years ago by $650,000, and this additional $560 would get them to the $2.4 million annually. And one thing that I think we like about it is half is in capital, i.e. state money that we can carry over and build up, and half is in operating. So it's a good mix about like trying to plan for money you know you have. But then if a bigger project comes up, like the Ktuat Quaker Meeting House Road intersection, you can let the Chapter 90 funds build up for a few years. So if we go to that, again, the percentage increase jumps from roughly 3.75 to just over 6. So I think that would be something that we'd want to take a look at, but only after we get some of those better numbers from the state and also on our health insurance is the other big number that we're waiting on. Like, we've planned for a significant increase based on what we were hearing in November, but we won't know for sure till February. So... And then...
But reserve anticipated percentage increase on the health insurance?
We were told, all towns were told to plan on 10% because of what's happening in the whole, you know, not just municipalities, but in the whole region. I know the group that we were a member of is looking at increases higher than that, from what I've heard. And then I've just heard anecdotally from people I know who work, you know, private sector, they're seeing the same thing. Interestingly, I think, you know, one of the things that you see advertised on TV a lot are all those pharmaceuticals that were made for one use that are now being used for other things. And I know the cost for those has really... And the use of those is like everywhere, has gone up a lot. So... Capital is still just under $1.4 million in net capital costs, so we're still getting some good things done. The school's going to get between the usual $150,000 plus another amount, like over $500,000, so they can address some needs that they have. There's a couple of... Probably our biggest thing on our side is to try to replace the aerial lift truck that we have. It's at least 15 years old, I think, so we want to try to replace that. But everything's looking pretty good. Bill Jennings has done an incredible job getting all this ready earlier than ever. Department heads have had draft budget forms since early December, even some before Thanksgiving, and we've had time to go through and meet with them. You know, I've talked on the side with Dr. Maruzcheck just to get a feel on what that might look like. I've spoken with, you know, Roger Forgett from the Upper Cape Tech, so I have a rough idea of where they're looking, although, you know, their budget by law is based on the governor's budget, so they can't even really give us a harder number until we get into February. But at least I know the ballpark of what they're looking at. You know, nothing crazy. So I think it'll be easy to fund that base budget in the base budgets, as we've heard them so far. And we would still keep the same planned excess levy reserve of $3.25 million. I know when Ben was in a couple weeks ago, the actual certification was a hair under four. So that's always better than what we anticipate. It may be the type of thing that you might want to look into. Let's eat into that a little bit if the numbers go away to consider that DPW. I mean, that's been a stated goal of the Finance Committee and Select Board for quite a while. And to think that we'd be able to get to that number without a debt exclusion is... I think it's really positive for the work that's needed throughout town. And that's a long... As you guys know, that's a forever thing. It's not... You know, those needs are only going to grow, and the cost is going to go up. So the more we can do, the better. So it'll take way longer, in two weeks, but that's roughly what I... Three weeks, but that's probably what we're going to highlight.
Great, very comprehensive. Just a quick one on the aerial lift. That's a DPW item.
Yes, it is. Yep.
Okay. And every time I see the income on the ambulance fund, but wow, that's a two-way street. That's a lot of stress on emergency services, too.
It is. Yep. Chief Burke, we were talking on some other things recently at one of our staff meetings. And when he first started with the town, he was a dispatcher with the police department. And before he went to the fire, his first year, they had... They were amazed that they had just reached 1,700 calls a year. This past year, we did just over 5,000. So it's... I mean, it really is an EMS service that we run with people trained to also do fires. But it's, you know, it's really that public safety EMS outreach that we do that I think is one of the best services we provide.
Indeed, indeed. Anybody else? Okay. All right.
Oh, and then on the format itself, this will be the third year we've given you the budget with like, you know, a one-page summary with some... this will be the third year we've given you the budget with like, you know, a one-page summary with some graphs, and then details behind it. Um, and we'll say it again, if people want to see it a different way, um, let us know. I think one of the things that Heather and I and Bill have talked about is, uh, once we make the, unfortunately, I, I personally believe, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, I think we have to do a dry, meaty presentation to you guys and the Finance Committee, because you want the details and you understand the details. Um, we want to work over the next two months to take a lot of that and boil it down to graphs, pictures, bullet points, and, I mean, our goal was to try to get that to five pages or less, you know, and our budget presentation will be fifty pages. So I think that's something that we want to work on after we do the primary presentation. Um, but any feedback that the board would have would help us, you know, try to, you know, what, maybe what sort of things to focus on. Um, personally, I think that those few pie charts that we do about where every dollar comes from and where it goes, like, those are pretty telling, and I think it's always surprising. I think when people see, if you subtract out the school, police, fire, DPW, the rest of the departments make up like ten or fifteen percent of the budget, you know? It's, it's really those four departments where the lion's share of our work and our money goes. So.
As you know, you can talk about it for, uh, an hour, but that one vision.
It is. It's, yeah, it's pretty, um, telling.
Very explanatory, yes, yes.
And just, you know, for the public, that, you know, we, we do furnish all of these numbers on the website. You can look at last year's, I think the last like ten
At least, yeah.
years that are on there. And then you can literally go through and find where every single dollar is spent, because I know I've been following some of the, you know, things on Facebook and the social media the last, you know, week and a half. But, you know, really, we go out of our way to post it to make it as, you know, easily digestible for everybody to look at, to find where their money goes and how it's spent. And if you have questions about where the money goes, you know, if you go through that presentation that we just put up on the, you know, for example, on the taxes, like it shows how your property tax is calculated, then we also publish the budget numbers. You know, you can go through as much or as little detail as you want, but literally every penny is accounted.
And I just had the same, every page that the two boards get in their budget binders, like every single page is on the website too. So people can look at the same exact information, and at least on the town side, like every single employee, from myself to, uh, you know, someone who works fifteen hours a week in a smaller department, you know, our names are there, the positions are there, what our wage is, everything. It's all this.
Very important, yes. Anybody else? Other matters not reasonably anticipated by the chair under old business. I have none. Other matters not reasonably anticipated by the chair on the new business. You know, I, I, I have a comment, a question. Are we considering a bench or something in memorial of the, or in tribute to the service, uh, provided by Chief Miller over the years?
Yeah, the Rotary Club reached out to us, and they want to do a bench near the peace pole that went in at the Cal. So, um, I know, um, you know, Susan Rantrick, our Community Services Director and Senior Community Services Director, and, um, Guy Boucher are trying to find the best location for that, but, yeah, no, they've offered to do that at their expense, and, you know, we're trying to just figure out the best place to put it, and hopefully that will go up, I would hope, before the Fourth of July at least, if not sooner. So.
Great, great. The best of all worlds, because he contributed a lot of his time and effort to our community and the Rotary as well. Flipped a lot of hamburgers. God bless him. Anybody else for public comment? Closing remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just wanted to make a few comments about Chief Weirdy and how he, he was one of the people who helped Sandwich to breach the great divide of growth. And when he came here, he was a young man and had worked in a city environment, and coming to Sandwich, he really loved it here, spent the rest of his days here, loved Sandwich. And the town grew from its five thousand population to twenty thousand while he was chief. The road mileage went from fifty miles to a hundred and fifty miles while he was chief. And yet he was ahead of his time, because he recognized the natives who were here, promoted them into his department hierarchy, and they helped to manage the local flavor while he was the chief. He was very strong, very disciplined, ran a tight ship, but was admired by people, you know, throughout the industry. Um, he also was one of the first chiefs to take on community policing. Did that in the early nineteen seventies. He was the reason why Mike Miller was the first school resource officer Sandwich ever had. The chief had to support that, or former Chief Miller wouldn't have been there. He was, he was really ahead of his time. Things like managing the car fleet, and that's a significant expense that's in the budget, that's now, Bud has institutionalized it into the fabric of the budget over time. But there was once upon a time when Chief Weirdy was on the floor of town meeting saying, no, I can't get by with one cruiser. I need two. And he had to fight for it that way, and often did. He also built the first police station, and then spent his, after his retirement years, he spent time on security at Heritage Plantation and continually helping people right through. So I just wanted to recognize him because of, he had such a significant contribution to this community, and we'll miss him.
And you mentioned the, uh, increase in the population, and, uh, he increased, uh, the personnel commensurately as well, which is extremely important.
And he was, he was good at the politics of that. He, he really was. He was a, he had a great Irish way about him, um, great sense of humor, and so, but thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I'd just like to, uh, then please maintain those under attack in Eastern Europe, the conflict in the Middle East, the overall threats at rural peace, as well as those affected by natural emergencies. Please keep those folks at our thoughts and prayers. Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero. Uh, a town meeting, uh, the thirteenth at seven P. M. at the Sandwich Middle High School. And our next meeting is next Thursday, the sixteenth, at seven P. M. here in Town Hall. Thank you very much. Have good evenings.